Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Royal Oak. Before we get started, could we introduce ourselves, starting to my left?
Woody Gantino.
Charlamagne Douglas, City Commissioner.
Ann Vara.
Tim Twain, Director of Community Development.
Ann Bieke.
Eric Klooster.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Item B is the approval of minutes for January 14th. Is there a motion to approve? Move by Ms. Bieke, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Is there any discussion? Seeing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Okay, item C is this is public comment for non-agenda items. So is there anyone here that would like to approach the Planning Commission on a non-agenda item? Okay, not seeing, we'll close item C. Item D is new business. It's a site plan. I am guessing there are people here that would like to listen to this and comment it after it's been presented. So I'm going to look for a motion from the Planning Commission to open up a public hearing after the site plan's been presented.
Well, I don't think you need a public hearing. I would just...
Public comment.
Public comment.
Public comment?
Public.
Public comment.
Yeah. I move we conduct public comment on the site plan review following the staff and petitioner presentation.
Okay, is there a support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Bieke. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. So, moving on to the new business. This is a site plan to instruct a seven-story, 96-foot business school, Baker College, on the site of the funeral home, Kinsey Garrett Funeral Home at 420 South Lafayette. Mr. Twain.
This is located on the northwest corner of Lafayette and Fifth Street. It is in the Central Business District. And in that district, facilities such as Baker College are permitted use. We do have staffs report simply for a review of the simple site plan. As was indicated, there is no, and was no, public notice required or given as part of this temple site plan. As you did indicate in your lead-in, it is a seven-story or 96-foot-high proposed structure to the roofline. That is within the parameters of the height limitation at this location. They are proposing, in that seven-story building, roughly 96,560 gross square feet. There's broken into about 17 classrooms and some other facilities that I'll let the petitioner walk you through as part of their presentation. They are also proposing to provide parking, which is related to the first contingency of the site plan, on basically three levels. One would have a basement level that would be accessed from Fifth Street. There is a grade level parking area, and then off of Lafayette. And that same entrance provides access to what would be parking on the second level above grade. In regards to that, the Planning Department's first contingency would be that the zoning board of appeals grant the necessary variances. They are required under the ordinance to provide 149 off-street parking spaces. As part of their proposal in that level, they are providing 67. Some of those spaces as part of that waiver would also need a dimension waiver in that they're only 18 feet deep or in length. The zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 20. The second item in regards to the staff report is the Planning Commission's determination is that they have met the intent of the ordinance requirement that above 40 feet, there should be a 15-foot setback as part of the structure. You will see on the site plan and floor plans that they are providing setback terraces on both the Lafayette and Fifth Street sides of the project. The third item in the staff contingency is related to site corner clearance triangles, and that's primarily at the vehicle access points of Lafayette and Fifth Street where they drive in and out of the proposed parking garage area, in terms of having sufficient vision clearances to the Planning Commission's discretion. The third item, or the fourth item, excuse me, is in regards to improvements to the public right-of-way adjacent to the project. The first part of that would be a determination of whether the traffic flow on Fifth Street should continue to be one-way eastbound, whether it should turn westbound, or whether it should become a two-way flow. That requirement would generally be dealt with through engineering and possibly the Traffic Committee providing input on an analysis as which way the traffic flow should be done. Assuming that it gets approval this evening, and then on Thursday, that analysis should go forward. The second item in regards to number B4 is in regards to the design of the drive approaches so that they're engineered to be consistent with city standards. And in that regard, the item 4C is in regards to the details in the sidewalk, streetscape elements, in particular, in regards to South Lafayette. The petitioner is proposing a design that's not consistent with the city's design pattern so that they can install an entrance canopy at their main entrance on the first floor. That would be item 4C. The remainder of our contingencies in the staff report are standard contingencies regarding lighting, signage, and compliance with the building code. Again, I'll let the petitioner walk through their detailed proposal, but if you have any questions with me, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Twain.
Any questions?
Yes, sure.
So are we to understand that your contingencies here, they have met the setback requirements of the ordinance, and they have met the corner clearance elements of the ordinance?
Well, the height and the 15-foot or that setback is really a determination of the Planning Commission as to whether you require it or whether what they're presenting is adequate. In past projects, you have indicated that the prior developer didn't need to provide any setback, and the building simply went straight up. Others, it's setback along the right-of-way line, somewhere between 15 feet in a design, but it's at your discretion as to whether that provision is adequately met. So we're simply pointing out they're providing it on two sides, roughly. And if you're happy with that, then the plan would go forward as presented. In terms of the site clearance triangle, the ordinance talks about having 10-foot clearance areas you drive in and out. Again, that's a discretionary item at the Planning Commission level as to whether the design you feel is adequate. It's not a staff decision, it's your decision as to whether it's acceptable. And again, you have approved projects where there really is no setback. They're built to the property line and the right-of-way line. And you've had them install buzzers and bells so that goes off when somebody's driving out.
And how does the, how do the sidewalk and streetscape elements differ from the standard downtown design?
Well, the one on Lafayette is wide enough to provide the standard separation in terms of distance between trees and the lighting. The pattern along Lafayette, along the west side, isn't consistent with that primarily at the, like I said, the main entrance they're proposing. If you look at the drawing, it would lay out differently in terms of that spacing. The one on Fifth, there's not sufficient width to do trees and lighting, so that one really is odd in and of itself.
But it's that way already?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Those are my questions.
Yes.
Question regarding the traffic on Fifth Street. You'd mentioned a couple of city departments. Is the intent for the applicant to conduct a traffic study to provide that to the city for analysis by?
The intent is to have an analysis done, whether it's done by the petitioner or whether it's done by the engineering staff. And TIA could potentially do it for engineering. It would be the responsibility of the petitioner to implement whatever that decision was so they would have input on that process and working through the engineering and the Traffic Committee to figure that out. We didn't do it ahead of time because if the project gets turned down at Thursday's meeting, there's no point in doing it. So it's just a contingency.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Bieke?
If you happen to know, how many parking spaces are in the public garage that is right behind this site or next to it, right down this side? Do you know more or less? 300, 500?
I want to say, I don't think there's 500. I want to say 450.
Okay.
455.
Because I understand that one is, well, that's all.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes, Mr. Twain, can you speak to the parking requirements, the off-street parking requirements in the Central Business District?
Well, most businesses in the CBD are not required to provide any off-street parking. There are a few that, under the parking provisions, have to. Residential units have to provide one for every, one and a half for every residential unit. Schools and colleges, this fits in, provides a certain number for classrooms and then square footage of each classroom based on their floor plan. Hotels, I believe, are another one that would have to provide some of them, but most businesses in operation in the CBD are not required to provide any general office. Restaurants, retail are not required to provide any off-street parking.
Churches too.
Churches.
Have to provide parking.
Right.
Any questions? Not seeing, is the petitioner here?
Yes. Going to take a moment to set up though.
Sure.
Also, we would like to have an opportunity, if the Commission's okay with it, to answer any of the questions that could come up after public comment.
Okay.
We have an opportunity to do that, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Great. Members of the Planning Commission, good evening. My name is Steve Carson, and I am the Principal of the applicant, Carson Equities. Thank you for the opportunity to present our site plan to you this evening, in hearing our request for site plan approval. Let me start by saying that we are extremely excited to present this development to you this evening, which we believe will significantly contribute to the future economic and social vitality of the city for many years to come. I'm going to set up my presentation to give you a little overview in the following way. One, I'm going to introduce our development team. And two, I'm going to provide a general overview of the development. And then three, I'm going to let our architects speak to some of the design characteristics of the property and the site, or the building and the site plan. Our development team consists of, and they're here with me this evening, architectural firm of Edge Design, Principal Dan Mooney and John Sharba, they're both here. Civil engineer Zimet Wozniak, who's represented by Julian Wargo, he's here as well. We have a landscape architectural firm of Grissom, Metz, and Andrus. Paul Andrus is here. We have a construction management firm in place, Clark Construction, who you are familiar with, they're constructing the Henry Ford next door. And they're represented here as well by Janet Suchin. We have a land use advisor, Carmen Avantini, he's here as well. We have a parking and traffic consultant, who we've engaged, Fleece and Van der Blink. Julie Nola's here. And we also have counsel, Carson Fisher, and we have a representative of Baker College, the COO, Jackie Spicer, she is here. So Commissioners, as noted by the Planning Department, the property is zoned. It is master planned CBD. The development includes approximately 64,000 net usable square feet, which is inclusive of 19,769 square feet of classroom area with 17 classrooms. The development includes 67 onsite parking spaces, which are on three floors, below grade, on grade, and above grade. The onsite parking is being built at significant costs, given the remediation which needs to be done for below-grade parking, as well as the cost associated with building parking above grade. It's interesting to note that, and there was some discussion of it earlier, given the property CBD zoning, if the property were used as an office, per se, no requirement, none, would be required for onsite parking, although the parking demand would be significantly higher. Although we are providing, notwithstanding, we are providing onsite parking which will accommodate 80% of our parking demand. You'll notice that the exterior design elements and materials are harmonious with the architectural character of downtown. We feature prominent brick, complementary glass facade, collectively providing an appearance of forward-thinking, 21st century architecture, along with features that are similar to those found in buildings within the CBD today. You'll notice the design of the north portion of the east facade is a nod to the historical character of buildings found in the city that doesn't have the setback, while the south portion of the east facade has features with contemporary glass, and those elements are similar to characteristics of new buildings in the city. The architectural integration between the north and the south sections of the east facade of the building highlight and achieve, are highlighted and achieved by this disconnection at the 40-foot setback. The property sits at the northwest corner of Lafayette and Fifth Street, providing future students, faculty, administration with convenient walkable access to retail and restaurant businesses on South Washington Avenue and South Main Street, notably through the alleyway which connects Lafayette and Washington. In addition to the onsite parking as provided, the property, or, excuse me, the property has many off-site parking options within close proximity. The property sits directly north of the South Lafayette parking garage, which includes 451 public parking spaces. It is one and a half blocks south of the North Lafayette parking garage, which includes 517 public parking spaces. And in total, within three and a half blocks, there are over 2,100 municipal parking spaces serviced by multiple parking structures, surface lots, and meters. In addition, the development will include the installation of an active parking management system, which will provide real-time parking occupancy and alternatives to students, faculty, administration, and visitors. As a development team collectively, we can't think of a more perfect location for this development anywhere in the City of Royal Oak or in the metropolitan Detroit area. We are extremely excited for it. During the last several years, as you're aware, the city has worked diligently to facilitate its local restaurants and business owners. The city has obtained bonds, it's built new parking structures, it's approved new office development, it's approved new multifamily developments, hotels, all with the goal of increasing daily foot traffic to facilitate economic growth within the CBD. To date, it's this development within walking distance to public transportation, retail shops, restaurants, cinema, stage theater, fitness centers, financial institutions, that will provide the active, daily pedestrian foot traffic necessary to create its vitality for a downtown daytime economy. Members of the Commission, as many of you are aware, a combination of strong health care and education are the centerpiece of many great American cities. It is our belief that Baker College, along with the new Henry Ford Medical Center, located in the CBD collectively, will strengthen the CBD during economic, during future economic inevitable downturns. The presence of Baker will promote the city's resolve while advancing many economic and social benefits, very similar to cities like Ann Arbor, East Lansing, Columbus, Austin. For over 100 years, Baker has been a leader in Michigan education, with alumni adding $2.1 billion annually to Michigan economy. Today, Baker is Michigan's largest fully accredited independent university, with academics organizing the colleges of business, engineering, informational technology, health sciences, and interdisciplinary studies. Baker grants 23 associate's degrees, it grants 40 types of bachelor's degrees, it grants 16 types of master's degrees, and it also provides a doctoral program for business administration. This development in particular will offer classes Monday through Thursday, morning, afternoon, and evening sessions, with a light load on Fridays, and it does not anticipate offering any classes on the weekends. It is also interesting to note that Baker has the lowest tuition of any private college in Michigan, which is exactly what is necessary to facilitate young generation faced with high costs associated with higher education. Baker students range in age from 18 to 28, with an average age of 26 years old. Their students are approximately 50% male, 50% female. And the anticipated daily population in the building will be anywhere from 75 to 150 people, inclusive of 20 to 50 educators, depending on the time of day or the day of the week. It is important to note that not all the students, although they may be enrolled at Baker, will be on campus at any one particular time. They have a very strong internship program, they have classes, they have students that go out on clinical rotations, and they also have distance components with some of the classes, which do not have them on campus on some days of the week. The benefits of Baker College, as I mentioned, will be both economic and they'll be societal. The presence of Baker in downtown Royal Oak will benefit the societal fabric and the educational growth of many young women of this very community, men and women who might otherwise not continue their higher education, excuse me, their higher education. It's interesting to note that the City, in the City of Royal Oak, the school department has advised us that approximately 50%, or 48% of graduates of the Royal Oak School Districts either don't go on to a four-year college, or they don't go on to college at all. So Baker, located in the downtown Royal Oak, will provide a convenient, affordable, excellent opportunity for high school students, high school graduates, to continue their higher education. An economic impact study completed in 2018 by Baker College found that average bachelor degree graduates from Baker will see an annual increase in salary of $24,500 a year compared to a graduate with no college education. As graduates' annual incomes increase, communities and their citizens will see a benefit of a growing economy and reduced demand on social services, which is truly a priceless commodity for this community for many years to come. Baker is an excellent resource for students seeking higher education and greater employment opportunities. Baker participates in multiple partnerships with high schools, community colleges, and provides an opportunistic path for students seeking higher education. Baker College offers a robust transfer program to community college students, which allow them to finish their associate's degree at Bachelors and thereafter continue their education, whether it be a doctorate or a master's or a doctorate degree. In fact, Baker and Oakland Community College today are developing a program called Bridge to Bachelors, which will allow OCC students to transfer to Baker, either to complete their associate's degree or pursue a bachelor's degree at Baker. Such a program between OCC and Baker will allow students of OCC Royal Oak to stay and continue their education within the city, instead of leaving the area to complete their bachelor's or their master's degree. All Baker College students are required to complete an employment-based internship. Such a program will directly benefit local businesses by increasing the pool of qualified men and women available to these local small businesses. In addition to the many societal benefits of higher education, Baker and its students and faculty administration will provide, as mentioned, a consistent, walkable, daily traffic throughout downtown Royal Oak, which will be accretive to small businesses who rely on this daily foot traffic. As many small business owners can attest, and they've mentioned to us previously, especially within the CBD, economic challenges are not limited to a general recession. The continuous growth, development, and disruption of online commerce weighs on these small businesses. And while they do expand our lives, they weigh on each business owner. In support of these small businesses, Baker proposed Royal Oak campus will not include a food service option, thereby encouraging students and faculty to walk throughout the city and utilize local restaurants and service providers. Baker has already been in contact, and actually has been contacted, by many local restaurants in the community who wish to offer incentives to Baker students to participate in some sort of program for their restaurants. Baker anticipates students and faculty will spend approximately $475,000 a year in local goods and services, and that's excluding any anticipated charitable contributions to the city. It is these type of uses which provide continuous foot traffic within the downtown that can provide the counterweight necessary to balance and even out these challenges in a disruptive economy. Baker College's core principles include being an exceptional corporate citizen. Baker College has a history of supporting communities surrounding its campuses and building lasting relationships in all service areas. A few examples: Baker was recently the lead sponsor of a Jackson County robotics program and received an award for such sponsorship, excuse me, sponsorship from Consumers Energy. Baker sponsored the I Challenge U State competition, which was a program this summer offered to high school juniors and seniors to compete and develop social, or solutions to real-world social problems. And most recently, Baker announced that it is the lead sponsor of live-stream broadcast for Detroit City FC, which is Michigan's only professional soccer team. Baker looks forward to becoming a member of the community in Royal Oak and establishing a bond between itself and the city, just like it has in other communities. To wrap up, I wanted to advise the Commission that, as part of being a good neighbor, it was important for us to meet with surrounding residents and provide them with an overview of our development before tonight's meeting. So on February 4th, we held an informational session at the Hyatt down the street on Main Street and invited over 300 residents to attend, and approximately 15 local residents attended. In response to a few of the comments from some residents, we will propose certain enhancements to the building's west facade, which I'll have Edge Design discuss. We have identified a specific developer representative to be a communicating, someone to communicate with residents during construction. And we will incorporate the active parking management system into the onsite parking facility, which will allow the students, faculty, and administration to the ability to see real-time parking occupancy on their mobile devices, something I alluded to earlier. This is the type of active management system which is presently used in the city right now. We are extremely excited about this opportunity for the city and Baker. It is a development such as the one this evening that will promote the future and the lasting vitality of the CBD, and as business owners and the men and women of the community who will really truly benefit from this higher education. At this time, I'll be happy to introduce our architects, and they can go over some details of the building, if you'd like to do that. I do that?
Sure.
John Sharba, he's with Edge Design. James Sharp.
Thank you, Steve. Wonderful job.
Yeah, you made your job easy, James.
Yeah, really. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having us here tonight and letting us present this wonderful project to you. I've been involved in architecture, doing architectural design for 30 years, and every once in a while, a project comes along that everything just clicks on. And the development team, the owner of the building, the clients, the consultants...
Pardon me. Please come to the microphone.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Talk into the microphone. Come together, including staff and the great community here in Royal Oak, which, you know, we've had the opportunity to work in before, so. With that, you know, there's so much of the ordinance and conversations and meetings that we've had with staff that really defined how this building shaped itself. Your ordinance did a really good job of defining what the requirements were from a road standpoint, setbacks, and infrastructure. And the key points really were changing and massing substantial variation in the building, projecting and recessed elements, how the entrance relates to the street, how the pedestrian experience is walking along the building, how the storefront is integral at the grade level, and then how that should transfer up to the building. Setbacks, height restrictions, you know, step backs in the building at the 40-foot height. It really helped to kind of say, you know, this is the building that we want you to build, and this is what it's going to kind of create as far as a form. And us as architects and designers, you know, take that information, do what we've been schooled to do and taught to do, and provide a breath of fresh air... schooled to do and taught to do, and provide a breath of fresh air and a brand image for a great use of Baker College here. So with that, I'll go through some of the site plan stuff and the floor plans, and what kind of led us to, you know, where we are with the floor plan. So Dan, can we pick up that floor plan, please? So you've got a pretty good understanding from Tim's conversation already. Lafayette is on your right, right here, and then Fifth at the south end of the building. So parking was a very complicated situation on this. We needed to go up, and we needed to go down. And in doing so, you really want to try to line up both of those ramps, taking advantage of the use of that ramp space as a stack. So in doing so, we didn't have the opportunity to come from the north, so we really had to come off of Lafayette. So that pretty much set us up for one drive that we had to have there. The second one for the up portion was off of Fifth Street. And that set this one up here. So in doing so, we've kind of created this L shape on the back where the parking was, and that set up where the front of the building was, obviously, out towards the street, you know, addressing this corner. When I first came to the site and walked the site, I was just taken with a lot of the architecture that was around here. Great parking structure that you have just to the east of us, the Lafayette parking deck, the Baldwin Building across the street, the theater. And, you know, we looked at that, we looked at all the materials, we looked at the law office, drawing a blank right there, Thompson, Thompson, Hamilton, Hamilton. All right, just to the north on us, on Fourth Street and Lafayette, and then also Lansing, or the Lansing, Royal Oak Theater. So with all of that, and all the articulation inside of those buildings, and following into the context, we looked at a lot of punched openings in buildings, a lot of brick. You know, we know that we want to use masonry on this building, we know that we want to use precast on this building. We also know that, you know, we're a forward-thinking client going into this building, and that they want to, they have a brand, they want to show what their technology looks like, you know, in the academic world. So we kind of created a building that peels away some of the architecture and exposes some of that at the corner, keeping in context with the surrounding buildings around us. The main entrance was set up on Lafayette. We have a secondary entrance coming off of Fifth Street, and we did create a little plaza here at the corner, again, to kind of assist in view angles as you're coming off of Fifth Street right here, which is one way, as you're probably aware, to the east. The paving patterns we have, again, we worked with staff on that and brought it as close as we could to what the requirement is. We do have our entrance slotted right here, and in doing so, if we were to follow the exact pattern, we would end up with a tree right in front of the entrance. And, you know, so what, that's one of the revisions that we're talking about, one of the things that we're asking you to kind of consider as you're looking at the paving pad. This is all stained concrete, which is the new standard here, opposed to using real pavers. We have bike paths, we have landscape, you know, and softening the edges in front of the building around the perimeter, and we've got previous pavers in the back right here. We've also set the building back, taking in consideration our neighbors to the west of us. You know, we could have brought this building over to the property line, but, you know, that would have been right on top of this little building here, so we pulled that in almost about 17 feet to the east, right? And in doing so, created a little parking area and a little bit of green space where people can kind of like meander. So essentially, that's the site plan.
The other thing to mention, I think, on the site plan...
Excuse me, sir. You'll have to go to the microphone. Thank you so much.
Dan Mooney, Principal, Edge Design Associates. Other thing I just wanted to point out here, James, the building columns, the building is recessed, so the sidewalk is wider at the street, and it enhances the pedestrian experience along our main entrance and along Fifth Street as well. So we've set the storefront windows back a few feet, so the columns actually come down to grade, and you kind of like walk around the columns, a little more big-city feel, and a little wider space, maybe a place to get some cover while you're waiting for a ride. Yeah, here's a, thanks. This is an idea of that pedestrian experience where...
Sir, you have to go to the microphone. Thank you.
It's the microphone. Can I get one that clips on? Usually I'm loud enough. So here, we've got the setback of the columns. The columns are out front, and the glass has stepped back, so we've got a little wider place for plantings, and just a little bit more pleasant experience. And as you can see, the glass is coming right down to grade, so that you can see in, and you can see the activity of what's going on on the first floor.
Perfect. You'll also note here that, you know, there's a tree left out of the plan right here, and that's in order for us to see the canopy projecting over the main entrance. The main entrance also is articulated in the facade that runs all the way up to the fourth level right here, so it's easily identifiable from the street or adjacent areas as you approach the building. Can you pass that down? Put the corner, again, as I pointed out in the plan, we stepped the building back, instead of coming up here at the corner and putting a column right here, in order to kind of open the corner up a little bit and create a little plaza area for sculpture, landscaping, or just to kind of create a opportunity for people to kind of move freely around this edge of the building. And then that's articulated all the way up to the 40-foot dimension, which is a setback that we have at the corner. We have brick masonry coming all the way down to the grade. That's pretty consistent around the entire building. We also have precast surrounds around all of our entrance, or window locations. And then to kind of play with the scale of the building, because actually, the parking of the second floor is in this zone right here, so that we weren't looking at parked cars on the second floor. You know, the owner and the architect and us, you know, we decided, let's close that all off so that there's no evidence of a car parked on the second floor from the street view, so. And in doing that, we kind of articulated the facade a little bit to break that up, so that we didn't have a large masonry element right from the head of the window to the second, or the sill of the second, or third floor, actually. So in doing so, we pulled that up and created a metal panel in here, and then we have some projecting canopies that are sticking out from those areas. Where's that front facade? Actually, I have it right here. So if we step back a little bit onto the opposite side of the street, you kind of get the look here of the entire building now, and you can see the articulation of the facade over here with masonry wall with punched windows. This is very reminiscent of just about every other building that's in this area as far as punched windows go. You know, we specifically could have gone with a much wider window, put more glass into it, but keeping in context with the requirement of the ordinance, and with the architectural flavor and context of the surround, we thought this was a really worthwhile venture for us to go down. I think it creates a facade that is very reminiscent of the Baldwin, you know, brick facade that's right across the street, and also some of the other architecture in the surrounding area, including the Lafayette parking structure. In doing so, we have the setback here at the 40-foot dimension on both sides of the street. You can see the articulation of the main entrance there. The secondary entrance is off here, the Fifth Street. And then here, we have projecting elements and recessed elements, in order to break down the massing, not just vertically, but also horizontally across the facade. These are like bay windows that kind of punch out, and then in these areas will be window benches. The materials here, which we'll get into a material board, and I'll show you them specifically, but the brick, the cast stone, and the metal panel are the primary finishes that we have. So as Steve had pointed out in one of our public meetings, this was the facade coming up west. So this is the east, I'm sorry, west facade, yeah, west facade right here. And as we come up the one-way street right here, one of the conversations that we had was trying to take a look at this material right here on the back, which is, again, masonry, to see if we can articulate that a little bit differently in order to give the view from this vantage point a little bit more of a warm feel with the red or brick that is in there. So I think we have that option there. Just for consideration, and just as Steve's pointed out, you know, our ability to work with the neighbors. So this shows what that facade looks right here, with the brick bottom up to the, to the third floor line. Again, the articulation of the building setback at the 40-foot dimension, and you can see the Baldwin Building in the background, and then also Fifth. I would point out that, you know, as this building, as far as projection goes, that really lines up to about here. This building is much taller than that, so as far as scale and massing of buildings that are in the surrounding area, this one is much smaller than, you know, the Fifth Street one. We look at the specific materials now. All right, Daniel, I don't, yeah, I can, we want to point out the brick, so.
So we got the brick here, the yellow, the different places where you see the yellow.
We can't pick you up unless, if you're going to speak, please.
All right, so...
Or you can speak, and you can point.
You point, Vanna, okay? So the brick is over there. It's really a fantastic brick, you know, this, we spent some time looking for this brick, because it is kind of reminiscent of the, a brick from the original coal-fired process that you would see in the 1920s. And it has a lot of deep plum values inside of it, and a richness of brick, it has some sparkles as far as the glazing goes, and it's both traditional with a little bit of modern kick to it, so I think it's an appropriate brick for this facade. And then the cast stone around the window surrounds, and then the metal panel. A metal panel here, in the middle of this, yeah. And the glazing is a clear glazing down at the bottom. That's essentially it.
Thank you.
So we'll stop there. I've got plenty of other stuff to share with you and answer your questions as they come up.
Thank you. Any, any other presenters?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll go ahead to public comment, and we're going to limit it to three minutes per person, so just raise your hand, and I'll call you up. Does anyone like to, sir, the red vest?
Just your name? Joseph Stout, 516 Southwest Street, so I'm a neighbor of the development, and I'd like to give a neighborhood perspective. If I could hand out something to the members of the commission?
Please.
It'd be easier to follow my comments.
I'm sorry, could you, you said you lived on your...
West Street.
West Street, okay, thank you.
Yes. So my neighborhood issues with the development as shown are primarily the, as shown on page two, the traffic, the noise, and the aesthetics. So you've discussed the traffic a little bit, but right now, as designed, you've got, you know, almost, I think, more than half of the parking spaces provided can only be accessed from Fifth Street, which is a one-way street, which means all the users of that have to come down West Street, which is a residential street. So I would appreciate the traffic study that you discussed earlier, and that may be able to help provide some reduction of that added traffic on West Street. The second issue is the noise. And I see an issue when I, when I look at the drawing, there's an open-air deck, so on the second level, it's roughly 1,300 square feet, so it's, it's pretty big, it's, it's the square footage roughly of the size of all the houses on West Street. And any noise that are generated from the users of that deck, it's going to be like a megaphone effect, coming right down between the hard-walled structures on each side of the street and emptying into West Street. So some kind of noise reduction characteristic would have to be incorporated in that, or, you know, reducing the size, or somehow kind of mitigating the sound generation from that deck and what would be imposed on the neighborhood. And lastly is, is the aesthetics. So I heard discussion of some kind of a change. I was sitting back here, so I wasn't able to see anything. It was only presented to you, so I don't know what the revision is, but, but as it is now, the neighborhood face of the structure is very plain, very, you know, it's not attractive. And we don't want another, we were surprised on the Fifth Development, it's, it looks like the north face is unfinished, and the west face of it is partially finished, it's just too much raw concrete.
Thank you, sir, it's been three minutes. Thank you, appreciate your time. Okay, anyone else? Your name, sir?
Anthony Randazzo. Thank you for the opportunity to come up here. We have some property on Sixth Street, and I'd like to compliment on how well the city's going with all the development that you have. In particular, some of the business developments you have, we have a multifamily project that we recently approved, and we very much appreciate that. I happen to think the building is beautiful. We build multifamily buildings, this is a very expensive building. It's masonry, I think it complements everything in the city that's being done. I think that the addition of more people that are here will support the retailers. This, the Baker College, from what I understand, emphasizes healthcare, there's an emphasis on that, so it's complementary to the hospital and the Henry Ford Building that's being built. I would just urge you to really support this. I think you're doing a wonderful job, and this is a great addition to the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, welcome. Thank you. My name is Deborah Nichols, and I live in Madison Heights, actually, 1800 Briarwood Drive. So I came here tonight to voice my support of the college purely as a parent. I have two college students, one who is out of state and didn't have the opportunity to stay in state for her program. She's a very specific chemistry major with forensic and criminal justice, so because of her heavy load, she has to go to school throughout the summer. There's really not anything local that offers the classes that her school accepts as a transfer, so this would be a good opportunity for her to be able to come home during the summer and, and work a job and be with her family. I also have a son who is a senior this year. He is looking at a college in Ohio. Baker does offer this program, so that would be really beneficial for him, and actually probably a better, more positive type of situation for his needs. I do believe what the other people said as far as like the foot traffic during the day. I know that a lot of the restaurants, like, that I've heard have told me, some of the owners, "Well, you know, during the day, we really just don't have the people coming in, it's more like a nighttime thing," so I think that would be a good benefit for the business, but I can't speak on the residential side, because I don't live here. So I just wanted to let you know, you know, a lot of the students do look elsewhere for college, and then end up staying there and contributing to that community and not the one they grew up in, so I just think it would be something to consider. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Teresa Garrett. I live at 420 Southwest Street, which means I will be directly behind the building. I unfortunately did not either get my notice or miss the notice of the meeting on the 4th, so I was not able to attend that. I have an issue with the fact that this is... I have an issue with the fact that this has been planned, that you are going to be putting all of this traffic directly in front of my home. I already have to pay to park in front of my own home in Royal Oak, and now I'm going to be lucky to have a spot, because I can guarantee you, every, for the first two weeks of every semester, we are going to have, be inundated with all the students not being able to find a parking place, because this has not been well thought out. So I really would appreciate if you would look at the actual amount of parking spaces and determine whether or not 67 is enough for the size of a building. I would also request that you would consider closing the end of Fifth Street at West and keep that traffic off of, out of the residence, if that's, if you have to leave that on that section. My next point is going to be about the back of the building. If you can look at the back of that building, I would like any one of you to honestly tell me that that's what you want to look at, because if you do, my home will be for sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment. And Mr. Carson, you wanted to come back to the microphone?
Thank you for having the opportunity to, to comment. And thank you to, to the public. Couple items I'd like to touch on. One is with respect to, and I'll try to get specific, so I can touch on their question. One's with respect to the, the west facade. The west, the property, as I mentioned, it's zoned CBD. The properties to the west, all property up to West Street is zoned CBD. That property can be, the properties that can be, that property that's there could house a three-to-seven-story office development. So we needed to take into consideration that it's very likely someday, I don't know when that day is, but that building, our building won't be visible from the west, because it'll be blocked by buildings that'll end up being built there in the future. So we really tried to take that in consideration, and we tried to take in some of the, the comments, which was why we added the, excuse me, the additional brick. And we also thought that if we pushed back, anticipating these comments, although there would be buildings that could be up to seven stories directly to the west of us in the future, we thought that it would be appropriate to push the building back away, as we mentioned, 17 feet, and we could incorporate windows. And therefore, that wouldn't have to be right on the lot line and look like the building on the north face, which has no windows, because it upsets the lot line, and as the commission knows, eventually, potentially, another building could go there at the same height. So we tried to take all of these issues into consideration when designing the west facade. Second thing I wanted to touch on, excuse me, is noise. As, as the commission is probably aware, that noise is much, it's much different during the day than in the evening. The noise, there's noise from the street during the day, there's noise from, from, pedestrian traffic, which really cuts down on a lot of the noise, any noise that would be coming from any of the usable area on the, the terraces. And with respect to the traffic, we anticipated issues like this, although it was not required. We had a traffic study done by Fleece and Vanderblink, and that traffic study identified minimal impact to West Street or West Road at all. Specifically, the volume of traffic, the highest volume of traffic would be during a morning rush hour, and I think the, I'm going to have Julie Knoll speak to this in a second, but that number was about 21 cars traveling down West Street, which is nominal when you think about the, the size of the development, and considering that this development, if it were not a school, could be built of the same size and could be an office, and it would have significantly higher impact on the area and the community. Julie, you want to speak for a second to, to the traffic study that you just did?
Sure. Julie Kroll with Fleece and Vanderblink, the traffic engineer and parking expert on this project. So I just want to speak briefly about the, the traffic impacts of this site. So there's, there's a couple of things. The volume of traffic, when we looked at the distribution of traffic in the area, the majority of traffic was coming from the north of this site, so primarily from 75 to the east and Woodward to the west, with very little traffic coming from the south. So when we looked at the distribution of traffic coming to the site, we said, "Majority's coming from the north," and if you were coming from the north, how would you get to the site? And knowing that the parking, 31 spaces are accessed off of West Street, which is, and then the remaining 36 spaces off of, there's 67 spaces total, the remaining spaces off of Lafayette. So we looked at how many would be coming in off of West. Now, if you were to come in off of West, knowing Fifth is a one-way street, you would go there in the morning, but if I was coming in the afternoon, most likely those spaces would already be occupied. So if I was coming for afternoon classes, I would come down Lafayette, look to see if there was any spaces on my app, if, in, off of West Street, and, and park most likely in the parking lot off of Lafayette, which is going to see more, higher volumes of ingress and egress than we're going to see off of West Street, which we anticipate is going to get filled up mostly in the morning with lesser volumes of ingress and egress at that, at that lot, just because of the proximity to the, through-traffic volumes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. As I also mentioned, we plan on having a active parking management system, just like ParkMobile, which will all.
Could you explain what that is, parking? I have that on my list of questions, parking management?
Active Parking Management System. It's an application similar to the ParkMobile application, which, are you familiar with, that the city has now? Where you can park in a meter, and it tells you. So active property management systems and applications like that will allow users of the application to know the occupancy of a parking structure.
So they, they wouldn't even go there if they was?
So if they knew it was full, or there was one space or two space, they don't even go there. They would go to either the Lafayette side of the building, or they would go to one of the municipal parking structures. That's the active property management system that we would, that we would implement. That's what it is.
How many spaces are off of the Fifth?
There are 31 spaces off of Fifth, and they're not connected to the other spaces. And also, it's interesting to note that when you, you come in from the west on Fifth Street, but as you know, it's one-way, so to get out, you're not going to have additional traffic over on West Street, because you're just going to go back onto Lafayette. You turn left when you come out. I also wanted to, if I could, I wanted to touch on the parking, because it was mentioned by Mr. Stout, I believe, that Baker College will not be a burden to the municipal parking. As part of our development analysis, we had Julie and Fleece and Vanderblink engage a review of the available parking in the south, the north, and the center-street lots. We looked at one year's worth of parking data, which was provided by the city. We reviewed the park, the anticipated parking demand of Baker College for this development. And Julie also analyzed the ITE, Fifth Generation Parking Manual, to determine what type of light-kind properties, what type of parking demand would be from light-kind properties. Fleece and Vander, Vanderblink determined that the average daily parking demand, Monday through Thursday, for Baker College will be approximately 87 cars, and we have 67 spaces on-site. So we're looking at an average demand of an additional 20 spaces spread through the municipal lots. The peak parking demand would be about 120 cars, and that would be for a cup, between, I think it's 12 and 2 o'clock PM. During the peak hours, it was determined that the parking surplus to the south Lafayette garage, inclusive of Baker, will have 60 to 89 additional spaces of surplus, while the parking surplus in the north Lafayette parking garage, inclusive of Baker, during peak hours, would have 187 available parking spaces. It should also be noted, and I think I may have mentioned this, that if we were to develop this as an office property, an office development, it would be substantially more parking-intensive than it is for its current use. It may appear anecdotally to, there was a, one of the, one of the comments that she thought that there would be a lot of parking during potential, you know, certain hours or certain days of the month, but. Looking at the data and looking at the statistics, and putting aside anecdotal information, there is significant availability to service the parking in all three municipal lots. So I hope that it addresses some of the questions that were today.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Klooster?
Yeah, you mentioned the 127 peak spaces. Is that aligned with anticipated maximum staff and student load during like a peak class period?
Yes.
Okay. And the, you said the average age of a Baker student is approximately 26. I'm assuming that affects your, the, when classes take place. What's, what's a typical schedule at, at Baker for classes?
My understanding is it's eight and a, eight to noon, and then one to four, one to five, and then there's an evening block as well.
Okay. And is there any data on what, which of those blocks tend to be more popular? Is it relatively consistent across all of them? I'm just thinking towards the student lounge and the outdoor spaces and concerns over the?
The afternoon block has, has more, is, the, the building has higher occupancy during the afternoon than in the mornings or the evening. Thank you. You're welcome.
So you have three blocks, morning, afternoon, evening?
Correct.
So the potential for that Fifth Street parking could be 90 cars, plus or minus a day, Monday through Thursday, maybe Friday?
Correct.
Okay.
87, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Douglas?
So, Baker College is a nonprofit? Do you pay property taxes?
That's a good question. Baker College does not pay property taxes. The property taxes that are currently paid on the property are $24,000 a year annually. The current use of the property is, as you know, is aware, is a funeral home. It's a sole proprietor, there's no employees. The Baker College, when it would, if it were to come in and be built on this site, would contribute about $475,000 a year to the local economy. It would be a contributor, a charitable contributor to the community, as it's done so in other situations. And as many nonprofits, as you're aware, provides many social, societal benefits. In this particular case, it's education. So while it doesn't pay the property taxes, I believe it gives significantly more than the existing $24,000 a year, both in societal benefits of education, as well as the economic benefits of pedestrian foot traffic in the city.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you speak on the graduation rate for Baker College students?
I'm not aware of the graduation rate.
What is, is it a four-year degree, two-year degree, both?
So it's, thank you for the question, it's a good question. Baker College offers a two-year associate's degree, a four-year bachelor's degree, it offers a master's degree program, and it offers a doctorate degree program.
Okay. Ms. Beiki?
You mentioned, and I see in the, the drawing here, some outside bark, bike parking. How many bike parking spaces are outside and how many are inside? Again, one of the issues with parking cars is we need to incentivize people to move to spaces in another way besides an automobile, and bike parking was one of those. And similarly, in the same line, how are you going to motivate your students to come by foot or by bike or park in the other parking garages that are existing in the cities, as in not just providing free car parking, but overlooking other people who might want to move in in a different way?
Well, to answer your first question that dealt with, how many, how many bike parking spaces do we have?
14 covered, 14 outside.
14 covered and 14 outside.
Versus 67 cars, uh-huh.
Those are the, the bike spaces.
Right.
Do we have also a moped space or a motorcycle?
Yeah, we have some moped spaces.
Excuse me?
18 total, 18 total spaces.
Of bike spaces and?
Of bike spaces, and then we got moped spaces in the garage, that, probably three or four.
Okay, so 18 total bikes. And I believe also the city is installing new bike racks or bike carousels directly across the street from us as well, so we could use those. It's anticipated, because of the, the age of the student, approximately 26-years-old, that the modal, the percentage of alternative transportation will be approximately 20%. And that figure will, will continue to go up every year, so it'll be, I'm sure there'll be more foot traffic, there'll be more bikes and so forth that'll, that'll take that, that route to get to school.
I have a question for Mr. Twain. The, Ms. Garrett raised a question about traffic and noise on West Street. She also mentioned she had to pay to park in front of her house. I didn't notice when I was there earlier, are there meters on West Street that?
No.
Yeah, there was a no, okay.
It's permit parking.
Permit parking?
Is that what it is?
Might be resident permit parking.
Okay.
We have to pay for a permit on West Street.
Okay, so if a student were to park there, they, they can't, they, okay. Thank you.
Really, the, the, if I may, I'm sorry, the idea for the design of this building was really to have students walk throughout the city, no food service option, parking's on-site, but also there'll be an opportunity to park off-site. The idea is to keep them in the city, so they can walk around. If we made it really convenient for them, maybe they wouldn't walk around. So that's why we have no food service option.
Any other questions? Oh, Ms. Beiki and then Mr. Klooster, or he?
I'm looking at the, again, western facade, where you raise the bricks and you edit again the bike space and the green space, and I appreciate that little bit of a pushback there. But listening again to the comments and looking at the kind of big wall, you might not be able to answer this, but I'll just state it, I don't know if there'd be a potential, and I appreciate the idea that there might be something built in the future, but if you look at all those bricks, either a mosaic or a, again, I like the idea of green walls or something like this, but rather than just a flat, and again, you may or may not be able to address this now, but I can appreciate the concern about it just being that flat surface. That's one. And then the other one, and I'm not sure if Tim could answer this, or maybe you, when we look at the overall landscaping requirements, and I see on some sides, there's no trees and such, is there compensation somewhere else in this structure, either on the roof or somewhere for those lost trees, like where there's only garage doors? That would be my other question regarding green space, which maybe you know.
I don't, I don't, I can't speak to the green space. I can speak to.
So it's just a less percentage, a lower percentage overall?
Well, there's, I'm, I'm not sure to answer your question in a sense of additional landscaping or landscape percentage. It's a, it's a code requirement, it's kind of left to your discretion to look at a site plan that's being proposed. And in the downtown, you're primarily building lot line to lot line. They have, on their own, chosen to step the building back from the west side, some 15 feet. Now, some of that they've done to make sure there's window openings on that side. So, and that's where they've had an opportunity to put landscaping in that set-back area along some other areas. The reason the north side has no windows is it's on the property line, and the building code won't let you put any windows in, so. Because potentially you may have a building there, so.
Commissioner, it's, it's a good question with respect to a mosaic or some sort of presence on, on the walls. We had talked about that with the, with the planning department. However, I believe it required a, they had to go to the DDA, or there was some, a signage committee?
Well, there's, there's different ways to treat that facade, and it could be just doing a a different brick pattern.
There was just...
Just to lay out the same horizontal way, but we can work with them on...
Yeah, we felt...
Make some treatment to it.
There's something we could do, but at this particular moment, we felt that at this particular time, it was best to move the building forward, toward this way. And if we want, when we discuss the sign alternatives for the college, which we haven't addressed, but when we do decide to do signage packages and alternatives, that's something that we can look at, for sure.
Mr. Kloster?
Some of the things we've done in the past on blank walls, like Imagine has spandrel glass in it, it's just a fake window. So we might be able to do that.
But again, you know, thank you for the question. We've just had to be also cognizant of a future building being built there as well.
Mr. Kloster?
Yeah, on the site plan, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding correctly because I've heard a dimension of 17 feet mentioned on the west property line, and the site dimensions it out as 14'7". I feel like it's sheet A001. I just want to confirm what that dimension will be, knowing how close that is to opening protective requirements and the impact that that might have on any glazing that would happen on that west facade and making sure that we're not building a 96-foot-tall blank facade on the west.
The setback is 14 feet?
Yeah.
The stated setback?
Coming to the microphone?
Yeah, the stated setback is 14 feet. Currently, I think we're a little further away.
Yeah, it says 14'7". Okay, so 14'7" is correct.
But the 17 feet was misspoke.
Okay, I want to make sure that the intent would be if we get to code analysis and opening protectives becomes an issue being that close to the property line, that the intent would be to shift that wall to preserve openings on that west side instead of build a blank facade on that west side.
I don't want to get too far down into the weeds of the building code, but we would be allowed up to 25% openings, and we've got a lot left to go to get to 25% openings. So we're good with the amount of openings per the building code on that side?
Okay.
Yes.
So based on, excuse me, one of the things you just said is I'm looking at the west facade. One of the concerns that I have is as you're walking up the sidewalk from Fifth, as you approach that building entrance with the vehicles there, was there any consideration given to a sort of, at that building corner, a punched opening with some glazing? So as pedestrians coming up, they may be able to actually see a vehicle that's coming out because you're not able to actually see anything until you get right to that opening. And there may be some buzzers or lights or whatever that you could implement, but some sort of visual ability to perhaps see a vehicle coming out of that garage as you're approaching that driveway, was there any consideration? You just mentioned you have more area that could be...
That is a very good point that you bring up, and that's on our radar.
Gotcha.
To cut an opening in there so that you can see as you're pulling up.
Yeah, I think I'm looking at an older version of that elevation that doesn't have the brick going up the...
We haven't instituted that, but that's on our own radar. We, as a design team, see the same thing that you see, and we're going to open that. Yes.
So we could do that?
Yes.
We'd agree to do that.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, a couple of things for the applicant and for Mr. Twing. We have a very active arts commission in Royal Oak and very much are encouraging public art. And while this is, it's not within our power to require it on that facade, we could suggest that you consider it, along with Mr. Gantina's idea about the window. I really like that. So we would just, I'm just going to just plant that little seed there.
I think it's a great comment, and we've discussed it again with the planning department. And I understand that it goes to the, whichever mosaic or however the design would be goes to the commission.
Yes.
And we would look at that, we wanted to look at that as part of our sign package to do that, so we wouldn't get something that would be bogged down in this particular process. But it's a great idea. We've discussed it. There are many great artists locally, and we've discussed it. It's a great idea.
Cool. Mr. Twing, our latest zoning map is dated 2011, but how long has, and I'm going to rely on your longevity with the city to throw this at you, how long has this block been part of the CBD?
It's been in the CBD since I've been here, which would be 29 years.
Okay. And it is this whole, the whole block, in fact?
It was all the way over to West Street.
Going all the way over to West Street. A second question, as the applicant pointed out, the current property taxes are $24,000. Are commercial properties subject to the same step-up as residential properties? That is, if this were a commercial development, would the taxes go from $24,000 a year to lots more?
That's my understanding.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
If you'd like me to make just one quick comment. Again, on the nonprofit point of it and the real estate taxes. If the property were to be sold, the real estate taxes went up three times. It went up to $75,000 a year. The benefits to the city are five, six, seven, eight, 10, 12, 15 times economically than they would be if it was simply $75,000 a year in property taxes, which is three times the amount. And in addition to that, the societal benefits are significant. So I understand the issue, but I did want you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for the petitioner? Not seeing, is there a motion?
I will say in reply to a couple of earlier comments, if you want a, in this west wall as part of your site corner clearance, want a cut in that opening, you can make it part of the requirement of item number three. So it'd be not a suggestion, it would be a requirement to cut and provide an opening there. You do have that discretion. As you indicated, you can't make them, put public art on this, but that you could do.
Any more questions for Mr. Twing? Mr. Kloster?
I move to approve SP 200202 site plan with the contingencies listed, including requirement for a clear vision opening in the parking entry and exit drive on the west facade as part of item three.
Support by Ms. Douglas. Mr. Kloster, could you restate your, regarding the clear vision? Item three, you said?
Yes, as a part of item three, include a requirement for clear vision opening in the west facade for vision of the entry and exit ramp for the parking garage.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I've got several things I'd like to say. The zoning for this site allows a building like this to be built. There's no special land use. The planning commission has very little control over what gets built here so long as it meets our physical standards. And indeed, this building does. It gives us some very nice setbacks, which is something that our code requires. It has some nice openness on the corner, the pedestrian entrance corner. So an office building just like this could be built, and we would have no say over that just as we have no say over this. I will say, however, that the city commission has, for a number of years, had a goal of bringing office uses into downtown, and so, and we have met our goal. So the city is not incentivizing further office development. Nevertheless, I would be happier to see office development here. I acknowledge Mr. Carson's case that the students and faculty here will bring vibrancy and economic benefit to our downtown, but of course, office workers would do the same thing. So there's, I mean, there's no real gain there. And again, I can't complain that they're not paying taxes because that's not within the scope of what we do here. I will say that our zoning ordinance has very specific requirements about the amount of parking required for an establishment like this, and Mr. Carson has acknowledged that they don't meet our zoning requirements. Their estimates are for less vehicles than our zoning requirements call for, but that's an item that is going to wind up in front of the zoning board of appeals later this week. That is their province. So yes, I will, in fact, I must vote to support this, but I look forward to seeing the results of the zoning board and seeing what they have to say about the parking.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Did you have some comments?
I just have a couple of comments. I just want to, I guess, get on the record that I definitely support addressing the north and west facades with some sort of mosaic or looking at some sort of public art. Another statement with regards to the parking that's there, you know, generally speaking, it's a pretty intense use for a smaller site in the CBD, but it is within what's allowable, so we have limited actions that we can take. One thing I would like to see, however, is I did not see any of the parking spaces that were being provided designated as EV spaces, if that's a potential to consider. I know it's not a requirement that we can force on you, per se. You're meeting the parking requirement, but if there's a number of spaces that could be designated as EV spaces, that's definitely something I would encourage you to look at.
Thank you.
Says the owner of an EV.
Yes.
Any other comments? So I've been struggling with this plan. I think it's a beautiful building. Seems like a very intense use for this small space. I am in complete agreement with Ms. Douglas and her comments about the CBD and the fact that this could easily be an office building. And if it was, we would have probably equal problems regarding additional traffic and noise, which I am empathetic for. So with that, I will support this. I want to get on the record, I've struggled with this, but I don't, I see that any other use would, we would have the same issues with the intensity of this spot and the location, so I'll be supporting the motion.
Before you vote, I just want to make sure you're good with the streetscape pattern on Lafayette.
I will say one thing about that. I'm, you know, obviously, we don't know if you've approved yet, but it's very early in the process, but when you put plants under a soffit, there's no way for them to get water unless you water them by sprinkling system. That's my plug for plants.
I understand. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Not seeing all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
On to ZBA. Okay, and other business. I'll let them collect their things and take a few moments to move out. I'm going to see these more intense uses. Really pump mass transit and commuters. I mean, it's the only light, because it's parking itself. It's not, it's worse than most of ours. I mean, if we had a commuter running right down the woodwork, they can hop up in four blocks and they're there. You've got the fast bus. That's true. I'm talking about the train. It's just a simple thing. It helps a little bit of stability, right? It doesn't really do much. And then it will be like dust collecting up. Okay, moving on to other business. Side variance request to install wall signs, freestanding sign, menu boards, and other signs for drive-through fast food restaurants. Smoothie King, that sounds like something out of the 60s, at 3135 West 13 Mile Road. Mr. Twing?
I'll run briefly through the appeals. Item A is in regards to allowing three wall signs on the west facade of the proposed Smoothie King. The illustration I have up on the TV indicates those three wall signs. One is the Crown logo. The second is the Smoothie King wording, and then the drive-through item on the wall. So those are the three on the west facade. Item C is in regards to the Smoothie King, which is mounted on the canopy that sticks out, and therefore, the one regarding a projection of the wall sign on that facade. The north facade is item B, where they're proposing two wall signs. Again, the Crown and the Smoothie King, which is, in this case, is mounted back on the facade of the building. The prohibited type signs that are referenced in D, the roof signs, are in regards to the Crown logos, which extend above the building's roof line in both cases. The next waivers are in regards to the menu boards. There are two menu boards. One's a pre-menu board and one's the actual menu board. So item E is in regards to allowing two versus one that's listed in the sign ordinance. The one that's listed as M3 in your packet is in regards to item F, which would waive two feet of the maximum six-foot height to the menu board heights, allow eight feet. Item G is in regard to the pre-menu board, which exceeds that six-foot height maximum by .68 feet. Item H, both of those menu boards, M3 and M1, were added together, and they exceed the maximum square footage of 20 square feet for menu board area by some 21.32 square feet, and that's item H. The last waiver is in regards to the freestanding sign at the corner and depicted here, and it exceeds the 42 square feet maximum area by some .22 square feet, according to the building department's review. Those are the various variances that have been identified and are in front of you tonight for consideration.
Mr. Twing? Any questions for Mr. Twing? Yes?
So the sign that's projecting three feet, I guess I'm trying to understand, is it, I'm assuming the depth of that is not actually three feet. It's because it's on, it's basically on the face of that canopy?
Yeah, I think there's a depiction of it.
Yeah, I couldn't make it out.
It's just mounted on the top of the...
Are you referring to page eight with the Smoothie King in white on the black roof line?
Yeah, right there on the overhand canopy, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here, I'll go back to what item number is. Yes, it's item C is what I'm referring to.
Twenty-four inches.
Right, the sign is actually mounted on the canopy, which is out from the...
Yeah, so it's mounted on the face of the canopy, which is why it's, it's essentially being projected more than 12 inches. Okay. And then the other question that I have was with regards to the pre-menu board. I believe that's depicted as M1, I believe is the pre-menu board. So my question that I have is, is the pre-menu board itself allowable and the variance that's being requested is for the size of it? Or is it twofold in that what's being requested is to allow for that additional sign as well as the size of it?
It's, under the sign ordinance, you're allowed one menu board.
Yeah, okay.
So they're asking for two. And it is too tall.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Twing, the monument sign, is that my...
That's item H.
That's item H. Aye. H, it's aye.
So .22 square feet for the monuments, the freestanding sign?
Yep.
Okay. And the shape, the white shape, is that, it says "White Crown by signage vendor," is that considered a sign, the shape?
Yes.
That's a sign too. Okay, so is that one of the three, then? The shape, the Smoothie King, and the words "drive-through"?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Twing, Ms. Douglas, sorry.
Which of the, between F and G, which one is the pre-menu board?
The pre-menu board is G. M1, I believe.
Yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions? Would the petitioner like to comment?
About that specific question?
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, if you want, I can cover everything. My name is Nick Prefund, I'm with Signs by Crane. John McAllister, he's here from Northern Blends, the owners of the franchises, and they're opening up Smoothie Kings in different cities along, you know, the state. So this is kind of a typical branding that they're doing with the signage. So if you want to flip through, let's take the north elevation first, I guess. You got the two signs, the Crown and the Smoothie King logo. Kind of mostly consider that as one sign when we're doing it, but because they're two separate items and measured separately, they're considered two signs here. While within what you guys allow signage square footage-wise, it's just that they're two separate signs with that respect. The next page, which would be the west elevation, you're considering those three signs. You've got the Crown again, and then you've got the sign that sits up on the canopy, and that's what it is. You're going to have a raceway that will sit up on top, that'll house the power supplies and the wiring and all that. And it's kind of a common look. I understand that there was a McDonald's that just came through and asked for the same kind of variance on their sign here in Royal Oak. The drive-through sign is basically for traffic flow, you know, kind of a directional, for directional purposes, more so than identifications, just to let people know where to drive and continue around the building. And then we have a sign on what is the south elevation. If you're coming, I guess, north on Coolidge, you'll be able to see that sign help identify the building for that purpose. Again, you know, there was a White Castle at this location, and the signage that we're proposing isn't any bigger than what was there. As a matter of fact, the monument sign, which is on the next page, we're just reusing the frame. We're going to reuse the sign cabinet that's there. Apparently, the ordinance must have changed since, you know, we proposed this sign, so, you know, but we're just going to basically reuse it, and I think the, it's a very minimal size-wise. You know, we could change that out if we needed to. But basically, we tried to, you know, we're not over the top with the signs, is I guess what I'm trying to say. We're not, we didn't propose anything that's overly obtrusive or anything as far as the look. And we're trying to get a brand, Smoothie King's kind of new to this state, so the branding is very important for people to be able to identify what that product is that they're offering there. And so you got the Crown, that's part of their logo, and helps identify what the business is. Part of the, with the menu boards, they've got a lot of different items that they have on their menu. And a lot of their business, I don't know, John, what would you say as far as the drive-through part of the business versus people going in? It's probably, what, maybe?
Seventy, thirty.
Seventy percent of their business is through the drive-through. So they want to have, you know, the menu board that has all the items. And I actually brought a picture, I've got a picture of some of the menu boards, I'll bring that and hand that out. This is show you. Sorry, I don't have enough.
It's okay. Thank you.
There's a lot of items on there. So, you know, while people are in line, you want, you know, you want to have a preview board. I think there's some flexibility in eliminating of the preview board, if that's part of it. But I think the main menu board, we're going to need, we're going to need that real estate to be able to put all the products on there. Otherwise, you know, they're not going to be able to advertise all the different variations of smoothies they offer. And they're not offering, Smoothie King's a lot different than tropical smoothie. I don't know if you've been to Smoothie King or if you've ever experienced it, but they're basically offering smoothies and then there's snacks. They don't do wraps, they don't do a lot of the other food. It's kind of a health-oriented product. So a lot of fitness people. And it actually fits perfect with Royal Oak in that, you know, you've got a lot of people that are into fitness and stuff. You see bikers and runners all the time here. And there's even, to me, the logo, and it's funny because you mentioned about art, you know, on the wall. I know that the logo itself, you know, is above the, it's considered the roof line, but it's, you know, when you look at the building, you don't really consider whether, you know, it fills that space and makes it, it's not just a big red wall. And I know that, like, you know, on that other project, which is much more extensive and kind of a nice project that's going on with Baker, you know, there was a concern about, you know, the wall, just a big brick wall. You know, the logo, if you look, you know, I think it's the north elevation. We're trying, yeah. If it was just a big red wall, it wouldn't look, wouldn't look nice. I think that looks really nice. It goes with their branding and helps, you know, give a little fun to the building, for my opinion anyways. And then the other thing with the menu board, as far as the real, part of the height is you've got a canopy as well. So you want the canopy to be above, you know, you want to be able to drive a car underneath it or SUV. So, you know, that's, you know, you've got the canopy, and that actually helps protect the people that are ordering from the elements of rain and whatever else is they're ordering. So, you know, that's, you need that added height for that kind of canopy.
Where is Smoothie King based out of?
Louisiana, New Orleans right now. Headquarters moving to Dallas soon, but they originally are from New Orleans.
Do you have one in Michigan?
We do, we have, last year was our first year here, and we opened eight, nine in Michigan and one in Ohio. This, we want this sort of be our first 2020 opening here in Royal Oak, and we're slated to open another 10 stores in Michigan and Ohio this year.
They have them in Livonia, there's two of them right now, Ann Arbor, Mount Pleasant, Portage, Allen Park.
Are they all branded the same?
They are. So this is what we would consider a standalone, so our standalone are all, they're branded like this. This building is a new concept that we volunteered to roll out for Smoothie King, much higher-end finishes. We know where we're putting the building, so we wanted to make it, some of the other elements are, you know, the old one, it almost looked like a big top tent with red and white stripes and all that stuff. And the photos on the computer, it's actually a gray cement board NITIA product. It's not white, so it's the white and the red. So this is, this, the color scheme is a new rollout. Oh, I'm sorry. The color scheme is a new rollout with the gray, before it was like all red and white and striped and things like that. But we wanted to bring a little more sophistication to the site, being where it's located, and, but the signage is standard for everywhere we go, even on our old concept.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So the logo on the north and west facade, I noticed that those were indicated as lighted logos.
Yes.
I guess, do we have any concerns there from an ordinance perspective that we need to specifically state compliance with certain lighting levels if those are lighted signs?
I don't think we need to. The ordinance already addresses glare shining across the property, those sorts of things.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Any other questions for the petitioner, Mr. Twing? Is there a motion?
I have a question for Mr. Twing. Just to be clear, the, so variance A and variance B, we're asking for three and then two. The ordinance allows one sign per elevation?
Per facade.
Okay. If we wanted to, for A, say two were allowed, but not the three, is that something we could do in this? Or we just have to deny A and they'd have to come back with something that showed two?
No, you can, you can, you can make a motion to do any part of what's in front of you. In the past, I mean, you could, you could grant A, B, and C, or B, C, and D, and deny others, so.
I guess the question is, could we, can we grant with modification? So, I think to your question, if we look at A as an example, if we wanted to allow two wall signs on the front facade versus three, would they need to come back?
Yeah.
Okay. Based on that, I guess I would want to make the, on the record, I'm not necessarily in favor of the pre-menu board. It just, in looking at, it's a lot of signage kind of wrapping around that building, understanding you've got a pretty big menu, certainly would be in favor of, you know, additional square footage for the main menu sign. I'm just not in favor of that pre-menu board in addition to it.
Just the pre?
No, that's, you've got, you've got two separate ones. If you didn't want to do a pre-menu board, you would deny E, which is allowing two menu boards. If you wanted to allow the one to be taller, then you could still allow it to be taller. Given that it's only 2.2 square feet above the maximum allowed, or, excuse me, it's, what's the other menu board?
The 1.32? .68?
I think you just passed it. That freezes.
If you wanted to allow the one menu board as proposed, you could just grant that one.
And I think that that would be acceptable to us. I mean, we're here to work with you guys, we want you to, you know...
I'm sorry, Mr. Kloster.
Yeah, I tend to agree with the pre-menu board being excessive in this case, as well as that west facade. I think the canopy sign is a little unnecessary. I think it says Smoothie King two to three times on every facade all around this building and at the corner. I think the drive-through signage adds some direction control and wayfinding, which I think we tend to view more favorably on this board as one of the purposes for signage. So I, that's where I'm standing. I think that canopy sign is unnecessary in the pre-menu side. I think everything else is relatively within good taste, and the way the logos are handed with built-up parapets, it doesn't feel like a roof sign that you would typically think of a roof sign. It's part of the building with the parapets built up, so I don't necessarily have any opposition to that. But understand the technicality, it's a roof sign, it's above the roof, but I think it's been integrated into the building appropriately in this, in this instance, where it's really part of the building and not a built-up roof sign.
The only comment I would make on the parapet wall in that regard, part of the reason the roof sign is based on the roof line is so you don't get artificially high parapet walls that basically create...
A sign that jacks up like that.
Right.
No, it's, but that's why the roof line is used versus anything else.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I'm going to disagree on the canopy sign on the west side, because that's their main entrance. If you look at the total signs on that, on that side with the crowny thing and the Smoothie King and the drive-through, they're still under the allowable 75 square feet of signage. And we have been pretty consistent in allowing multiple signs so long as they added up to less than the square footage requirement. I'm not, I don't, my take on the menu boards is, it's internal signage. I mean, our job is to make the city look good, and menu boards, including the ones here, are so buried on this site that I don't see them having a big impact on sort of the public visage of this building. I could be swayed by my fellow commissioners on that subject. I'm not strongly advocating for the pre-menu board, but I am going to stick with my opinion on the canopy sign.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas.
Maybe I'll just make that motion.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Douglas, is there support?
Well, so, so...
What's the motion?
Actually, my motion is to grant all of their variances.
Okay, there's a motion to grant all variances, is there support? No support. Motion fails. Is there another motion?
I have a comment.
Ms. Beiki.
I was just going to comment that I guess where I'm on this, I think the, where there's the three signs that they're, even though they're separated, they're under the overall square footage. I think I could live with those being there in terms of being agreeable, in terms of other things we've done. Given how huge the second menu board is, I like the idea of limiting the pre-menu board. And again, just a shout out to people who bike or people who might want to walk up to a window. Again, our obsession with only people driving tends to drive us to do these things that make it less inviting for bikers or walkers, and that particular corner is not necessarily amenable. But again, if we could think about some walking up to a window, some picnic tables, a bike parking, that changes that, I think, again, especially if you're going for something that's a healthy choice, why would I go run my 10 miles and then I have to get in my car and drive over to you? Should there be other options? Anyway, so I'd just like to state that. But as far as the signs go, I think, I would like to at least see the pre-menu board let, removed if we're going to do the bigger, full signage, I mean, main menu.
Yeah, and I will move to approve all the variances except E, allowing two drive-through menu boards.
I support that.
We're going to have to change H, because the maximum menu board size will be limited to M3, because that square footage in there is both of them.
Okay, so, motion to approve all variances except E and modify H to reflect the size as depicted for the single double menu board under the canopy.
Okay, is there support then for that?
I support you.
Okay, is there a discussion on this motion? Okay, so I'm going to support this. I would have supported Ms. Douglas's also, because I think this is a difficult corner. And while I appreciate the notion of walking or riding a bike, I don't even want to drive around this corner, so. It's a difficult corner, I have no objections for the signage, I'm amenable to eliminating the first menu board, but I'll be in support as well.
I'm going to make another comment. G's got to go away too, because that's related to the pre-menu.
The pre. Okay, Mr. Kloster, do you accept that?
I accept that, yes.
Ms. Beiki?
I agree.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Smoothie King, good luck.
Thank you very much. That's a win for us.
Welcome to Royal Oak.
I'm interested. If it has kale, no.
Yogurt ones are good.
Smoothie King has everything from things that's wonderful, it's sweet, all the way to the green kale. to the green kale. Yeah, so you can get anything in between. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. We have, item two is a preliminary review of capital improvement program.
What I'll say on that is we've scheduled the public hearing on it for March's meeting. We really just give it, give it to you tonight so you've got a little bit of time to look at it in case you want to. But the actual public hearing on that will be at your March meeting, which will be the 18th. If you recall, we backed it up a week because of the election.
Oh, that was it. You must have looked at my calendar today going, um, what?
Yeah. It's the 18th.
Okay, good, yeah.
I made that motion, I believe, last month, so move it back a week.
The 18th and not, so it was, I'm sorry, it was the 10th, but we moved it to the 18th.
Right.
Okay, good. Thank you for bringing that up. I had my calendar wrong. I would have been sitting here all by myself on the 11th. Okay. The election of officers.
Oh, can I ask a question about the capital improvement? Oh, public hearing, just one quick question. When, when we advertise that or promote that as far as a public hearing, how does that notification go out? And it?
Generally, it's just pursuant to the state statute and it goes in the paper and put on the city's website.
But there's no, like, mailing of something like this? It's on the website?
No, mail it to the resident.
Yeah, yeah. And it's in the email blast, maybe?
If you sign up for notices from the planning commission, you'll get the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. Commissioner.
Okay. Mr. Twing, the election of officers.
We'd open nominations for chair and vice chair. And once you have that nominations done, you close nominations and vote.
On each separately?
You can do them together or separate.
Okay. So is there a motion for election of officers?
Well, nominations.
Or nominations, I'm sorry. So, yes. I nominate Ann Beiki, or Ann, Ann Barra, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't, don't panic.
I agree with Ann Barra.
And for chair. And since he had the bad, you know, bad, you know, choice not to be here tonight, I'm going to nominate Gary Casada as vice chair.
Okay, there's a, a motion to nominate myself for chair and Mr. Casada for vice chair. Is there support?
I'm sorry. This assumes Mr. Casada will accept the nomination.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Kloster. Any other nominations? Okay, not seeing, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. I'm honored.
Thank you, Ann.
I appreciate it.
And I'm glad you're honored.
I am honored. Absolutely.
I want to bring up three things before you adjourn.
Oh.
One, the city commission has been discussing the marijuana language that the planning commission sent forth with a recommendation regarding potential allowing various uses in various zoning districts. It's not my intent to go to that. But the discussion at the city commission table was potentially to remove the medical licensee definitions. And before we did anything with that, I wanted to make sure whether the planning commission had any strong feelings. I've spoken with the city attorney. Doesn't appear like it would be necessary to come back before you for further consideration and a new recommendation. But if the city commission chose to amend the zoning ordinance to eliminate any consideration of those facilities under medical marijuana, is there any strong feeling one way or another? From the commission's standpoint, city commission's standpoint, I believe their thought was anyone that has a medical card is going to be able to still get product from a recreational facility. And therefore, it's not necessary to license both. There are issues with licensing both under a separate ordinance that the city would adopt that they've been meeting with outside counsel on. We'd have to have two licensing ordinances, one for the medical facilities and one for the adult recreational establishments. So it creates some issues from administration standpoint. And there's really not a huge benefit of doing both that, that's been identified. So anyways, I just wanted to raise it to let you know that the city commission may want to eliminate that or amend the ordinance to take that out. If there's any feedback, I'd take it to them. I don't know if you want to add anything. Sorry, you were at the meetings.
The only issue, the only potential reason to incorporate medical is for people under, for non-adults, for people under the age of 21. Because nowadays physicians can prescribe marijuana products for children in appropriate doses. And this would eliminate the ability of parents to acquire that here in Royal Oak for their children. Now, I will point out that Ferndale has medical marijuana and, and so is Madison Heights. So people are in need, they're not going to have to drive very far to find it.
Is there concern over, I guess, any, anyone that would want to open a recreational establishment? I think as it is right now, you mentioned Ferndale. But I think they, right now, they have sort of both, right? They've got one side of the facility that currently serves the medical clientele. But then they're waiting on the other side of the building to go live with the recreational. As I understand it, there is a difference in the product types. Do we have a concern that if by not doing the medical piece, the medical licensing piece, anyone that would want to open an establishment maybe would reconsider if they don't have the ability to do both?
I'm not getting that feeling. Frankly, I think from staff standpoint, we think the medical will go away once the recreational gets stronghold because they'll just, you can get basically this product. From an operational standpoint, if you hold both licenses, you have to track the product separately, the funds separately, the, so from a business model, if you're doing both, you've got to treat them as totally separate. So I, from our side of the ledger, the administration enforcement side of it, it's almost leading towards, it'd be simpler on our side only to do the recreational.
Sure. That part I understand.
But again, I can't speak for an operator. There might be some operator out there that has, doesn't have to pay the tax on it or doesn't have to do something. But if you're trying to do both, you've got to track both separate.
Again, I don't know enough about the business, but the thing I would be concerned about is if someone either, especially if the product's somewhat different. To me, a medical marijuana establishment, I would imagine, is going to be a little bit of a different atmosphere than the recreational. And I wonder if people are using, you know, and I know some people use the license for the medical to get for recreational or whatever, but I don't know if it's too much of a burden to the city, of course, not having it. I'd go with what the commission says.
And again, some of the commentary is, is if you have a medical card, if you buy it recreational, you don't have to even have the medical card.
Right, but I think about the type of.
You don't have to register, you don't have to, so nobody's going to know that you're even buying it.
I think there is a product difference, right? So it's, it's the difference between going and buying a bottle of Tylenol off the shelf versus getting Tylenol 3 with codeine, right? That's sort of the difference that we're talking about in terms of the product that's available. I think from the atmosphere comment that you had made, from what I understand, it is a little bit different in terms of how they treat their customers, right? The, the customer base that holds the medical marijuana card is obviously much smaller. And they're almost treated as if they're VIPs in the sense that, you know, their side of the store, they go right in. Whereas on the recreational side, it's a much more protracted process apparently. So there is definitely a difference. I just figured I'd bring it up since that was, you know, topic of conversation, that there's, I think there's other ramifications to the business owner and how they might consider our ordinance if we, if we eliminate the one side. But I agree with you. I think eventually medical is probably going to go away just because of the logistics of managing two different systems from a state perspective.
As I, as I'm listening to all of this, I realize that if I had a recreational license, I could still offer product formats and strengths to cater to medical marijuana customers, you know, and merchandise it in that way.
That's a good point. I wouldn't be surprised if it's a marketing point.
Yeah.
You know, this is the good stuff. This is the regular stuff.
Well, I go back to the original question. Would, would the planning commission have any objection if the commission decided ultimately not to license medical and take it out of the zoning ordinance? Because that's the contemplation that's going on at the commission table.
We had some earlier discussions.
No, I would say no.
I think in earlier discussions, again, that's something that is more the city commission than we, because that's a part of the, the licensing, we were told previously that we really don't have that much to say about because we're more about the structures.
But we would take it out of the zoning ordinance.
Oh, I see.
And that is part of your review.
I look at it like this. Same thing with alcohol. I mean, if you had a license to have an alcoholic beverage, but then all of a sudden alcohol was legal to buy otherwise, why, why would you still have a speakeasy? You know?
Well, I would correlate it towards you can, might have a license to SDM or an SDD to sell it. But you have a Class C, you can consume it on site. There's a lot of.
Not that we're talking about that.
Right, no.
No.
All right. The other issue that was kind of related to that that came up at the meeting was there is industrial property on South, on Lincoln, on the south side, that is zoned general industrial, that would allow marijuana establishments to go in there in that location. The discussion was, would you want to consider initiating a rezoning of those properties to some zoning district that would preclude that from occurring? And we're basically talking about where the rope brewery is, the storage facility that's behind it, Royal Oak wastepaper, that area of town.
A lot of new housing that we just approved too. A lot of townhouses.
I don't think that's in the industrial. That's, that's in outside.
It's just across the street though, right?
I know. It's not zoned industrial.
Well, I mean, in terms of our logic as far as saying industrial and general business, I'm just saying if we're saying not downtown, that it's.
So right now, it's zoned general industrial. Potentially, an operation could go into that area. So if you wanted us to initiate a rezoning, we'd identify those properties, schedule it for a public hearing, notify the property owners that, I'm not sure what district would take it to yet. I'd have to look at that, but that's a question that came up again at the commission meeting.
Yeah, and I, and I'm the one who brought it up. Because we're seeing that part of town go so residential and so densely residential that if, you know, Royal Oak Recycling could make more money, you know, selling marijuana than they do processing solid waste, they could do it. And it would be a big marijuana facility right there in that redeveloping neighborhood. Now, maybe that would attract residents, who knows? Anyway, I brought that up just to, for purpose of discussion.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see staff's opinion on what that, what that rezoning would look like.
Well, net, if you want to do that, I would like you to make a motion to direct staff to investigate and schedule a public hearing on rezoning those properties that are general industrial so that it's very clear that the board's not wanting to initiate that. Now, whether you ultimately recommend approval or denial or something down the road, you can change your mind once we get there. But in terms of initiating it, I would appreciate a motion to initiate it.
I would agree with that too. I would agree with Mr. Kloster. I think it's important to take a look. Is there a motion?
Yes. Move to direct staff to investigate rezoning the general industrial properties in the Lincoln area.
Is there support for that?
Support.
Support by Mr. Gantina? I'll get it. Any discussion?
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
That's all I had. And again, I just want to remind you, the next meeting's the 18th, so it's a week later than normal.
Thank you. Again for that reminder. Okay. All right, we are adjourned.